Let's start. Okay. All right, Karen, I'm going to start.
Okay.
All right. It says this is a special meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on June 29, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to section 13 of the Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on June 24, 2022, and has been posted to the municipal website wwwprincetonnj.gov/meetings. And by and then, okay. Pursuant to pursuant to extension of the ongoing state of emergency by heat of order 292 in accordance with the emergency remote public meetings protocol for local public bodies to conduct public meeting, to conduct the public meeting without physical attendance by the members of the public. Bodies to bodies to conduct public meetings without physical attendance by members of the public. That during the extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board of the Princeton municipal, at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website. And and are, it should be, and is to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. They changed the opening statement.
It did change.
All right, Claudia, can you please call the roll? Claudia?
Ben? Ms. Colson?
Here.
Mr. Davich? Mr. Floyd?
Yeah.
Driver? Cannonball?
Fine?
I'm here.
Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Here. Okay. We have several resolutions this evening, a number of them. And I guess we'll take it from the top here. The first is 420 Mount Lucas Road, case number Z Z 20-875. It's block 4201, lot 15. So a copy of this resolution is in your packets. And is there, is there any comments, modifications, or if that, if none, would somebody like to make a motion?
The board members, before we have a motion, there are several clarifications to the resolution that I reviewed today with Derek. If you would turn to page seven. And these were all modifications which are as a result of the changes that were made to the applicant at the last meeting regarding the relocation of the garage. So for the front porch addition, the required left side yard setback, the proposed setback should be plus or minus 23.8 feet. And then if we go on to page eight, the required left side yard setback for the garage, the proposed should be 20 feet to the building, meaning the garage and 18.5 feet to the eve of the roof. And also, we're going to add a sentence indicating that the existing nonconforming, the total impervious coverage is going to maintain at 50%. That's what it is now, and it is not being expanded with the project. So those are the revisions that we're suggesting to the resolution.
Hey. Once again, if there are any other comments, any comments by board members or if someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it with revisions.
Thank you. We have a second? Thank you. Claudia, can you call the roll, please? You're muted.
Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Yeah, that's it. I can't, I.
That's it because you voted no, Steve.
Exactly.
Members weren't there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, our next here, our next resolution is Z 22-19051 Cleveland Lane, block 6.02, lot 10. Okay, again, the resolution is in your packets. If anybody would like to comment on it, or if not, if someone would like to make a motion.
Steve, the resolution was in the packet, but then a revised version was sent over with minor changes. So that's, that's what you'll be approving to me.
Thank you.
I move that we approve that with the, the new, the revised version.
I have a second.
Okay. Claudia?
Um. Who moved? I'm sorry.
I did, Eve Colson.
Ms. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
You're welcome.
Here. Right.
Okay, our next resolution, case number Z 22-19214 Wilton Street, lot six, a block 65, lot 53.07. Again, resolutions in your packets. Questions, comments, or motion, please?
I'm over approval, Michael Floyd.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Eve Colson?
Thank you.
Colson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, our next resolution is Z 21-1969 Morgan Place, block 6802, lot 15. Resolutions in your packets, questions, comments, or motion?
I'm over approval, Floyd.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Eve Colson?
Thank you.
Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
I recuse myself. I can't vote.
Right.
Okay, our next resolution is the case Z 22-201, 263 Hawthorne Avenue, block 31.05, lot 55. Again, the resolution's in your packets. Questions, comments, or motion, please?
I think the, the roll call vote is incorrect.
Okay.
Oh, you're right. I apologize, Michael. You did vote in favor, right?
No, I voted against it.
All right, then let me take that out of those in favor. Okay, we'll make that correct.
Steve voted against it, too.
Yes, I voted.
Yeah. Yeah.
I did.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion, or are there any other comments on the motion, on the resolution?
Oh, Stein, I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Colson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and our last, our last resolution this evening is case number Z 22-189 49 Lovers Lane, block 10001, lot 18. Again, the resolution's in your packet. Questions, comments, or motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Somebody want a second?
I'll second it. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. All right.
Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good.
Herman Cohen?
Yes.
Before we start the first case, I note that attorney for 144 Bayard is here and he'd like to address the board regarding carrying this case, so.
Oh, okay, please.
To indulge him, that would be great. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Tom, Thomas Kenny. I'm an attorney with the Brennan Law Firm. I'm filling in for Frank Brennan tonight. We are attorneys for the applicant Yaz and Bentes regarding the application number Z 21-166, and the property located at 144 Bayard Lane, Princeton, New Jersey, block 3.02, lot 34. We noticed this hearing by publication in the Trenton Times on June 16, and by notice to all persons within 200 feet of the property by certified mail on June 17. We also submitted to the board an affidavit of proof of mailing and publication regarding such notice with original certified mailing receipts and a clipping of the newspaper publication, the email on June 23, and by Federal Express delivery on June 24. Based upon the affidavit of proof of mailing and publication, I respectfully request that the board take jurisdiction of this application.
Board members, that, that is correct, and that's normally how we would proceed and but I believe the applicant is asking also to carry it and does not want to hear it tonight, correct?
That is correct. We are requesting an adjournment of the hearing to the next available zoning board meeting, which we understand is July 27.
Board members, the noticing is in order, and the board does have jurisdiction tonight. And if you wish to carry it, you can. We just need to make sure we're announcing the date so the applicant does not have to renotice.
Derek, Derek, when do we have available space on the 27th of July?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So I guess, Mr. Brennan, we can carry it until then.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the board's consideration of this matter.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this first hearing, which is case Z 22-218? Yeah, I have to recuse myself. I was noticed on that. So Eve Colson will chair that case. Eve?
Okay, so first application is 30 Chestnut Street. As our chair said, it's case Z 22-218, block 3001, lot 25 in the R4 zone. This Casey, is the noticing in order for this one?
It is, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application tonight.
And Mr. Bridger, could you give us your report about this case?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Just swear you in for the evening. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
The applicant's Cora Walker and Joshua Desai are the owners of 30 Chestnut Street, located in the former borough. It's in the R4 zone. And they are seeking C1 variance request to permit the construction of a patio, an exception to the required side yard setbacks. The subject lot is not complying with regard to the 6,000 square foot lot area requirement. The existing lot area is 5,473 square feet, and the lot width requirement is 60, whereas the existing is 40. And the, the house itself, the property is not complying with regard to the smaller side yard setback requirement of eight feet, whereas the existing is 2.1. And it's also not complying with regard to the combined side yard setback of 20 feet. The existing's 9.3 feet. The applicant is proposing to construct an irregular shaped 398 square foot patio, and the patio encroaches into the side yard setback to following variances required. The requirement's eight feet, and they're proposing a 2.5 foot setback, and they have requested consideration under the C1 criteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't know if Elizabeth Kim is on the meeting. If she wants to, it's in a suggested historic zone, and I know they, they looked at it. Did you want to address the board, Elizabeth?
Um, yeah, I mean, it was reviewed administratively, and it was really determined.
Elizabeth, I just need to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
And excuse me, so to continue, I mean, it was reviewed administratively, and it was determined that there was no objection to the proposed application.
Thank you.
So, board members, does anyone have a question for Mr. Bridger before we begin? If not, um, I see, I think both applicants are here. Are you representing yourselves tonight, or do you have a, an attorney or any other expert?
Well, we are representing ourselves. In apologies, we're in separate locations.
Right. It happens often these days. So, Ms. Casey, would you like to swear them in?
Um, Ms. Walker, and is your, is your husband going to testify? I don't see him on the screen anymore, so.
Hello.
Oh, there you are. Okay, Mr. Desai, Ms. Walker, do you both swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Thank you.
Okay.
I do.
Okay. Tell us about this application.
Good evening. So we are looking to, as Mr. Bridger stated, construct an irregular shaped patio. There is currently an existing patio on the property that extends 100% of the way to the left side yard setback. And we are actually looking to reduce the size of that patio to alleviate the setback and extend it further back into the yard due to the narrowness of the property. We're unable to comply with the required setbacks, and in fact, our house, as Mr. Bridger noted, mentioned, is nonconforming. The side yard setback is less than two feet, approximately two feet on one side and eight feet on the other. So we are looking to construct a approximately 395 square foot patio in our backyard under impervious coverage, but are requesting a variance for the setback requirements. I would also say that I've spoken to both of our directly abutting neighbors about a proposal and discussed the plan, and although they are not here tonight, they are both in support of our plan and raise no objections to our requests.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions right now?
Um, I do. Ms. Walker, you said that the patio you have now, when you bought the house, goes to the property line. It goes to the southern property line to extend, so there's no setback currently.
That's correct. Yes, so it was approved as a variance prior to us purchasing the home. And if you look in the application, there is a drawing, and it shows where the existing patio is being removed, and it goes all the way to the existing fence. I'm unclear if that's actually 100% of the property line. There, there may be a few inches, but the existing patio does extend all the way to the fence on that side of the property. And we are looking to actually remove a portion of that patio to provide some setback for that area.
Okay, so that's like the little, the hashed part?
That's correct.
Of your, okay, okay. Okay, so the whole thing is now the patio, the it works, you, I guess you have existing asphalt.
So we have existing brick patio that, as I noted, extends all the way to the property line. We're looking to extend that patio, but also reduce the size of the existing patio so it doesn't encroach on the setback as much as it does currently.
Okay, so you're looking to extend it the, in the other direction?
Yes. So instead of to the side, we're looking to extend back.
Okay. And you have like a little cutout there for a tree or something?
That's correct. We were trying to, in good faith, put as much space between us and the property line as we can, given the constraints of our lot.
Okay, okay. And you said that the existing patio had a variance?
That's correct. My understanding is it was approved in 1996, prior to us purchasing the home.
Derek, do you have that in your files?
Haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
I mean, if it was a driveway at one point, it could go all the way to the property line, so it looks like it would, could have been an extension of a driveway.
Anyone else have any questions of the applicant right now? Okay, I guess our next step would be to have do, I guess, open to public comment right now, right? Okay, is there anybody, Claudia, is there anybody who looks like they want to speak to this?
There are no hands.
Okay. Okay, so we'll close the public comment. Ms. Walker, do you have anything else that you'd like to say about this?
I would only note that based on some review of variances granted to other properties on my street, and this, a similar situation has been granted a variance before, so there is precedent for this type of request. I would just request that you keep that in mind in considering our application.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I guess we'll go into executive session now.
Just some clarification. There was a variance in 1996 for a two-story addition, which was never built, and the plans on that addition seemed to show the patio in place at that time, so. But it's hard to tell from the survey.
And Mr. Bridger, just to clarify, I believe that there was a subsequent amendment to that application.
I don't have a record of it, but.
Yeah, where they said it was financially infeasible to build a two-story addition and instead extended the property back, and that is the portion of the house that you now see on the survey.
Why don't we, since everybody's looking at the survey, maybe we should just make that an exhibit so everybody knows we're looking at the same thing, if that's all right with you, Ms. Walker. We'll just call it Exhibit A1.
That's fine with me. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's helpful. We purchased the home in 2021, so we were, we were not the applicants for this addition.
The only addition, the only variance I see was for a third story addition on, on the house.
Um, but Derek, the plans did show that, that patio that goes to the property line?
It's hard to say. It's a very old survey.
Okay.
There's, there's a driveway, and it's hard to tell where it stops, so I can't with certainty say that it does or not, unfortunately, due to the graphics.
Ms. Walker, do you know how how large the present patio is? The square footage?
Um, it is 49 square feet.
Okay, and so then this is the, we're looking now at the proposed patio. Is that correct, Ms. Walker?
That's correct.
All right, so we'll make that, we'll call that Exhibit A2. So we're all looking at the same thing.
And then what is that little brick area?
So that is, I don't know what to describe it. A brick area is probably the best word for it. It's being removed. Removed as part of this patio construction.
Okay, so that's not part of the existing patio, or it is part of it?
Uh, it is not connected to the existing patio.
Okay, okay. Okay.
I have a question about the, the stormwater ordinance. Does this, is this within the limits? Mr. Bridger, if you would.
If you're required to do stormwater management when you create more than 400 square feet of net new impervious.
Yes.
And by them taking away certain portions of the existing patio, the brick patio, they are adding 398 square feet, and they would, would not be subject to stormwater management.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions right now before we go into executive session, since we have Ms. Walker here? I don't think she's going to be going away quite soon, but.
Remember now.
Yeah.
Eva, are we clear on, just, maybe it's just me, I just can't figure out where the existing patio is.
Where the current one is, is that what you said?
Yeah, I, I just.
If you look on the.
I mean, I, I can see that. Yep, I see, I can see, um, yep, I see the survey. Mm-hmm.
So.
And I see the new patio.
Where the, the portion of the house has one-story frame, and immediate to the left of that, there's what appears to be a fence, and then the word's brick. And it appears to be about a, a nine by 12 patio adjacent to the left side of the house, kind of almost as an extension of the driveway. Do you have the survey that you could bring up, Cora?
Okay, okay, so that's where the patio is.
Yeah.
Okay, 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 okay.
Thank you, Claudia.
I'm sorry, I just, I just did not understand.
And, and I believe the picture that Claudia pulled up shows it more clearly. So where the blue text boxes, this is Walker Desai Residence, that is the house structure. And at the top of the screen, which is to the left of the backyard, that is the existing patio. And you can see it goes all the way to the fence line. And the portion that is slashed and red, we are proposing to remove to actually add setback to that portion of the patio, and then to extend. and then to extend the patio into the backyard.
I see, okay.
All right, and why not, let's just make this an Exhibit Two, because this is providing clarification, so we'll make it Exhibit A3, but what, what is this slide called?
It's the proposed plan.
Proposed plan, got it, okay.
Good questions. Anything else right now? Shall we go into executive session? I feel like, I feel like that's been a bad question, because it keeps getting somewhere, or a good one, maybe.
Happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, well, let's go to an, into executive session, and I I want to know what others think about this. Anybody wants to speak to this one?
Well, I'll start. It is on a narrow lot. As it qualifies to C1, although there's a lot of narrow lots in the neighborhood and all in the borough, zoning is not being changed and hasn't been changed, so we could deal with this lot, I believe, as, you know, looking at it as its particular features. It is a patio with, it still complies with impervious coverage, so I'm glad to see that. And all the other setbacks except for this side yard. And there is, is a fence. That's all.
Sorry. I worry about, you know, impervious coverage and flooding. I, am I, I believe, I, I think this, in this case, I believe there was something said about, it's not in what I have right here handy for me, but I feel like I read, and I believe it was this case that said, actually, some of the water will go back towards the back of the property. Do I have that right, or was that?
Is, is it okay if I chime in?
Sure.
So, given the current construction of the patio, it needs to be replaced, and the brick currently slopes towards the fence line. So as part of this patio project, we aim to modify the paver so that there's proper drainage. So if we were given this variance and able to construct this patio, there would be a net improvement to drainage, given that the existing brick pavers are old and are not sloped in the appropriate direction for rainwater runoff. They currently drain into our neighbor's yard.
And that was, I, I did read that, Ben, in.
That's correct. We, I included that as part of our application. And to your question on previous coverage, we are under impervious coverage even with the addition of the patio.
And is the patio, Ms. Walker, going to be constructed with pavers, or I'm just looking to see how impervious the actual patio will be?
Yeah, so it would be paver material on a sand bed.
And Mr. Bridger, is that the preferred?
I mean, it, the way they're doing the project, they're eliminating existing impervious service, and they're adding an amount that does not exceed four hundred square feet, so it's not something we review. If it was over four hundred square feet, the fact that it's on a sand bed, it's still considered impervious coverage. You know, sometimes there's impervious pavers, but that's, that's not, or pervious pavers, but that's not what we're talking about here, but there isn't any stormwater management required per the ordinance on this application.
Any other comments? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this as a C1. Yeah.
Stein, second.
For, for basically the reasons I cited in my.
Claudia? Can you?
Hey, Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes. All right. Unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Have a happy course.
Thank you.
Okay, Eve, thank you very much. Okay, our next case is case Z22-186, 239 South Harrison Street, block what is that, ten? Is that, ten oh oh one?
Eleven oh oh one.
Eleven oh one, lot thirty-six. I'm sorry, my monitor is here, it's a little funky. Okay, Karen, are all the notices in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order, the board has jurisdiction tonight to hear the application.
Thank you. Derek, can you summarize your memo, please?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. Satish Garantla and Amulya Suri-Girl are the owners and applicants for 239 South Harrison Streets located in the R5 Zone in the former Princeton Township. And they are seeking a C1 variance to permit the construction of a second-floor addition. In exception to the required height-to-setback ratio, the existing house is a single-story ranch. The subject lot is non-compliant with regard to the required twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-square-foot lot area. The existing lot is fifteen thousand four hundred square feet. The subject complies with the, the applicable bulk regulations, and they're basically constructing a sixteen hundred and forty-square-foot second-floor addition. Will contain three bedrooms, three full baths. The addition will violate the required height-to-setback ratio on the southern elevation, and the requirement's one-to-one. The proposed height-to-setback is one to zero point eight-two. And they have requested consideration under the C1 criteria.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kennedy, are you representing this?
I am, thanks, Mr. Chairman. If we could, Claudia, the, the applicant has his hand raised, if we could move him over, we'll just have one witness tonight and hopefully be a simple application for you. As Mr. Bridger noted, this is an existing home in the R5, and I'll say, in a kind of an anomaly of the R5 Zone in the former township. This, as you'll see in, in a minute on the, the zoning map, are mostly narrow lots. While this is conforming in all other ways, it's not conforming to lot area, and it's actually one of the bigger lots on the stretch of properties here. So the applicant is looking to build a second floor to their home, and essentially build it over the existing location laterally, of course, which would require a small, I, I'd say de minimis, but a small infraction to the height-to-setback ratio, where I think you'll see in the neighborhood, most of the other homes are actually built much closer and taller to the, to the lot line, so this is the, kind of the outlier of close to compliance. Again, before I go too much further in summary, perhaps if, if someone has their, their, their hand on the the keys, I still see Satish is, is as a, an attendee, I'd love to, to bring him over as a, as a panelist, so we could get his testimony. Yep, here we go. Thank you. So in addition to that, you know, wanting to go over the existing space, which requires less, you know, going back in less impervious coverage, we feel that this symmetry in the design is aesthetically appropriate for the neighborhood, that you'll see the, what we'll call, I guess, a side or an end gable feature on both sides matches a lot of what, what is seen on the street. And then, I, I'll just note for comparison, this is not a dormer. However, I will note in, in the neighborhood character ordinance, there were some really rational thinking and kind of understanding that some things perhaps should protrude or could protrude into height-to-setback planes, including dormers. Now, while this is a side gable, only the top fraction of it will actually protrude, and if it were to be done as a dormer, which is just not aesthetically what makes sense here, it would likely be done in a way that would comply with the neighborhood's characters' dormer-projection provision. So with that, I, I see we have our, our applicant, if we could have him sworn in.
Mr. Mr. Garantla, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening? Will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you. If you just want to briefly introduce yourself as a relatively new homeowner on this room here, yeah?
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. This is Satish Garantla, and my wife Amalia, she couldn't manage to join because she has to manage two kids, very young kids. One is fourteen months, the other one is special, like nine years. So we moved to Princeton like November last year. So we purchased this home and thinking like, it's a very small home, like we are hoping to get this home renovated, so that it will be big for our family, for our young kids. And we are hoping we'll get everything in our favor.
Thank you. If it's all right with the, with the board, I'd like to introduce our one exhibit that was previously submitted, I guess we can call it A1 of numbered slides this evening.
All right.
And as, as is not often the case, the numbers actually did appear this time, so I'm, I'm happy to make it a little easier to orient the board. So Satish, if you could just, I, I believe that blue arrow points to, to your property there on South Harrison?
Yes, so that's the Harrison Street, yes.
And, and what's behind you in your neighborhood?
So it's a, it's an open Princeton area, so behind me. And from the forward, it's like a Harrison Street, and behind, it's all open area for us. I think it's a Princeton open land.
So behind you is the, the E1 Zone, and also across the street is the E1 Zone, but, but you're in the, this kind of projecting finger, I suppose, of the R5?
Yes.
This next slide, three, is this a kind of neighborhood overview of your, of your property in blue and your neighbors?
Yes.
I, I'll just note, you know, Mr. Bridger noted that it's conforming in all other respects, except for lot area. And we're in, this is, happens to be at a hundred feet wide, the only one in the area that actually complies with lot width. The, the prevailing pattern here is fifty-foot-wide lots. And the one next door is seventy-five, but most of them are, are, are non-conforming for, for R5 for lot, for, for width. And we, even as the biggest lot in the area, are not conforming as to lot area. So this next slide, I guess this, this also shows some, some street views of the surrounding properties and their kind of proximity to you and then the lot lines and orientations. Is that, is that what we're looking to hear, Satish?
Yes.
Next, what, what's, what's here? This is your, the existing condition of your house?
Yes.
All right, and I know you, you, you mentioned your family, but the idea is to have enough space here with the second addition that you can all fit and not be on top of each other?
Yes, exactly. Right now, we are on top of each other, and that too, like I was saying, with a special kid. It's really difficult.
So next to slide six, on the bottom left is the front elevation of the existing house, and the bottom right is the front elevation as proposed with the rendering above it. I'm gonna, just because we'll get right, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words. Here is the height-to-setback diagram here. As you could see, we shaded in red, but the existing, the what's permitted, which is the one-to-one, and the slight increase over that to allow for that side gable is shown on the left. Like to just step back one slide, perhaps to, to six again, and just point out that, that left profile, the one that's kind of offending here, while it is not a dormer, it is only the uppermost portion of that side gable that even fails to comply with the with the height-to-setback ratio in a, I, you know, just suggesting we, we do not comply, I don't think, as a, as a dormer, but I'll just note that there is an, there is the understanding, I suppose, in the, in the, in the code now, that there could be some projections, and the idea that, you know, long runs of things are less appropriate than shorter runs, as well as the, you know, visual interest of, of breaking up the, the space. So, again, while we don't count as a dormer, I'll just note again that we are dormer-like in a, in a side gable treatment. I just want to go back again, one. I guess two other slides here, again, just to the, the neighborhood view to, again, note, you know, we did ask this as a, as a C1 variance, that the benefits of building up above the existing house versus a, a, a front-to-back, more of a sprawling addition does save on impervious coverage, and, and we believe the I'll say prevailing, or the, the benefits of spacing between these homes by using that same lot line is generally preserved, particularly in comparison to the development patterns of the neighborhood, which are much more of a, of a borough-type zoning than the R5, which is in the rest of the zone, a much larger lot size. So I hope to keep this as simple as possible. Satish, I know you reached out to all of your neighbors, did anyone get back to you with any concerns about this?
No.
Certainly be happy to, to answer any, any questions about the, the design or, or the needs of the homeowner here.
I have, I do have one question. It appears to me that a very simple solution to this would be to carry the gable, the new gable on the second floor, straight back and eliminate the gable end. And the symmetry can be done on both sides, so basically you have a hip on the ends, which would eliminate the need for the variance. Is that something that you may have considered?
Satish, I know you, you did, we did talk about that, and, you know, from a design perspective, it was kind of hoping to match some of the other side gable homes in the neighborhood, is that?
Yes, that's what I want to match it. I don't, I mean, this looks much better for us, the way it looks right now. We didn't go, go to the real offense, and this is the simple design we thought this is appropriate for us.
But, Ms. Chairman, your point well taken, that, that variance could be eliminated. What, you know, the, the, what I, what I would describe as a de minimis variance could be eliminated by cutting off essentially that part of, of the second floor there.
Okay, that was the only question I had. Board members, are there any other questions of the applicant or the applicant's attorney?
Yeah, I have a question.
Please, Michael.
Yeah, I'm in the submission on, on the application form. I, I wanted to check some numbers on page three with Mr. Kennedy.
Certainly. And I'll say that the the application, the, the plans that, that we're all looking at now were revised post-application. There was some, I'll say, difficulty of understanding with the, the setback ratio and, and how it was calculated, that ultimately was resolved post, after the initial submission with Mr. Bridger.
Okay, so I, I just want to confirm what's accurate and what's not accurate. You know, I, I guess on the application form, page three, the lot area, the zoning required, as Mr. Bridger said, is twenty-one seven eighty. And this form says ten thousand eight ninety. Is that, that's obviously incorrect, right?
That is, that is, that is, Mr. Bridger is correct.
Um, and let's drop down to, and I think what you were alluding to on the setback ratio. Um, and let's drop down to and I think what you were alluding to on the setback ratio. The existing on the form, it says one point seven five one. On your drawing, it says one point one three for the existing.
The existing is is one point one three. The proposed is one to zero point eight two, I believe.
Yeah.
Those
Whereas the forum said two point five.
That is correct. Often when things are done incorrectly, I guess initially we're we're asked and I to to update the the zoning application form, I guess in this case, we we didn't do that once we worked out the actual measurements with with Mr. Bridger.
But everything else is good. Floor to area ratio proposed is the twenty three, seven.
That is correct. Also note that it since it's a a a nonconforming lot as to size, I don't think we calculated the proportional floor area. I guess it it could be higher than ordinance number if that were actually calculated, but the applicant is not looking to go anywhere near that.
Yeah, and also with impervious covers, you're significantly significantly under that.
Correct.
So I just wanted to to confirm that I I find, you know, this interesting because you meet all the setback requirements, you're significantly shorter in height. And yet you still inch inch over the setback to height ratio. It's you're it's a very complying building in many ways and doesn't come close to maximum. I, you know, being a non math major, it kind of makes me shake my head.
Well, I I know that I think the applicant is is happy with these plans rather than scurrying away to his architect to build something bigger. It seems to be the trend.
Yeah, thank you.
Do any any other board members have any questions?
I do. Mr. Kennedy, if, as Mr. Cohen suggested, you somehow flip roof around or did something to eliminate that? Does that push into the living space or how the
Likely not in a meaningful way. There is attic. There is storage space attic in that location that would it would be lessened on both sides. The the house is quite, you know, could be much taller than it is. I think thirty five is permitted. We're only at about twenty, a little hair over twenty five. So they I guess they could have gone to a taller, more full height attic in a in a lesser, more compliant kind of center space. But this was the I have a a balance of storage and and height rather than kind of pyramid it up to a taller center. So there there would be some attic storage loss there, but not not living space.
And the surrounding homes. Can you show that picture again? I'm just trying to look at their roof lines.
Sure. Hold one second. Window. Once I minimize the window, I cannot share it anymore. So help me bring this back. So the house next door is a like, I'll say like my own, what to call it. It's a Victorian shape, but not with the Victorian style that has a side gable. The one to the left of it is a a side gable and the one two down is a kind of narrow front to back. I guess what what you what you'd get to try to maximize a house on a on a smaller, you know, more floor area on a on a smaller lot there. I'll I'll note while we didn't calculate them because of the lot sizes and setbacks required for R five. The house next door, for example, is only fifty feet of frontage. So even as a one and a half story home, it is I'm not going to say grossly, but doesn't come close to to the height to setback ratio. Similarly, even for the house on the on the right side, which is a bit taller than than our proposal, even with that kind of generous setback. None of these homes really can conform with the height to setback ratio, even the ones that have some, I'll say, attempt in their historic pattern to to have the setback as as ours does.
Thanks.
A question about that, if you don't, if you don't mind, Mr. Kennedy. Are there variances and perhaps Mr. Bridger associated with these height to setback ratios of the other places that do not conform?
I'll let Derek think. My suspicion is that this neighborhood being such an outlier predates that these homes are are predate the the R five zone would be my guess, but I'm curious if Mr. Bridger has any more specific.
I was going to have a similar response, right?
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant or the applicant's attorney? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, we're going to open this to the public. You want to say anything before we do?
Yep. Thank you so much.
Okay, that was good. Okay, we'll open this up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience, Claudia, that has raised their hands and wants to speak to this application?
There are no hands.
Okay. All right. We'll give it a second here. See if anybody arises. Okay. All right. We're going to close the public portion of the hearing. Once again, Mr. Kennedy, before we go into executive session, do you want to say anything?
Just very briefly, as far as the negative criteria based on this, the type of of homes in this area and the prevailing development, as well as respecting the existing setbacks that there should be no negatives here where this is an artifact of a a neighborhood that comes with unfortunately inappropriate zoning, this house being the closest to complying, but almost just just making it. And it is a balance of the we'll say the aesthetic and storage purposes of the top and the benefits of not going further back in a more sprawling design like some of the other houses were forced to do. And with that, I thank you for your your consideration tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, board, we're going to go into executive session. Does anybody have any comments on this application? Eve, Michael, George, Donna?
Well, I I I can't find negatives. I must say, I I was looking earlier in the day for stuff on height to setback. So I can understand it better. And I came, I did run across the as as Mr. Kennedy mentioned, the the things with dormers and other protrusions that would be allowed or appeared to me that would be allowed in place of of this this particular small, small variance. I'm impressed by how how under require undersized the house is regarding, you know, many applications we see respecting a lot of the important things we look at. So and coming in well in under that. And it's an interesting point if this is the most compliant of the noncompliant houses in the neighborhood for height to setback. I just think the positives, I'm impressed by them and the negatives, I can't find them.
Okay.
I agree with you, Michael. I agree with you, including that I would I although I did not do the research on that you did this afternoon, but I it made me think about what is the, you know, height to setback ratio? What is that protecting? And I'd like to understand it a little bit better.
So it's it's really well, others could, it's related to enough light and air for your neighbors. Basically, and you don't cast a deep shadow on your neighbor. And I don't think this little excess has any effect on taking away light air from the neighbor. So.
Thank you for that. I I want to mention at this moment, if we do approve this, I noticed that the in the floor plan for the second floor, one of the bedrooms does not have a a door. So I'm sure you can adjust that.
That's a good point.
But that doesn't concern us. What that we wouldn't be voting on that one word yet.
The applicant will probably catch that before they start constructing this, but that's a good catch.
Hopefully. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll I'll move approval as a C one for for all the positive criteria that I cited and I can't find any negatives. So.
Okay, we have a second.
I would second.
Thank you. Michael, thank you. Your very thorough analysis in this call.
Well, I kind of finally admitted to myself, I I know less about height to setback than I thought I did. When I saw this very client application.
Okay, Claudia, can you please call the roll?
Wilson?
Yes.
Boy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Herman Cohen?
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Herman Cohen, could we take a five minute break, please?
We can. Okay, it is. It is eight thirty five. We'll resume at eight forty. Thank. Okay, as soon as Mr. Bridger comes back, we'll begin again. Okay. Right on time. Thank you. Derek, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Our next case is two is Casey twenty two dash one seventy two twenty John Street block. Oops, lost my screen. Block was at fifteen point oh four. Lot eight in the R R four zone. Okay, Karen, do we have all the paperwork in order?
Yes, you do. The noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bridger, can you summarize your memo for us?
Yes, your honor. John and Megan Jackson are the owners of two twenty John Street. And they are seeking a C one variance to construct a second floor addition and a small two story addition on the rear elevation of the subject property. An exception to the required side yard setbacks and height to setback ratio. Properties located in the R four zone, as Steve indicated. The existing single family use is permitted as a right and the subject lot is noncompliant with regard to the required six thousand square foot lot area, the existing three thousand, six hundred square feet. It's not compliant with the sixty foot lot width requirement. The existing is thirty and a lot depth is also required or is also noncompliant to requirements one hundred in in the existing is one twenty. Excuse me, it is compliant. So the height to setback requirements, four point five to one, and it's noncompliant. This would be on the left side as you look at the house and the smaller side yard setback requirement of eight is not complying. The existing is one point two feet. And the larger side yard setback of twelve is also noncompliant in the combined side yard setback of twenty is not complying to existing five feet. And the applicant is proposing to construct a second floor addition and a small two story addition that will provide an expanded dining room and kitchen on the first floor and a master bedroom suite on the second floor. And the following variances are required. The height to setback requirement is four point five to one in the the existing is eight point seven five, the one point one seven. Smaller side yard setback requirements eight, the proposed is one point two feet. A smaller side yard setback for the two story addition. Again, it's eight feet and the proposed is three point one feet. In the smaller side yard setback for the patio requirements eight feet. And um. The uh, smaller side yard setback is one point seven. The combined side yard setback. Is twenty feet and the proposed is uh. Five feet. Those are the variances, it's also in the historic. Zone um. And Elizabeth Kim is here, the HPC has reviewed and she has uh. Their report, so I'll hand it off to her, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, Elizabeth, can you summarize your report for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Bridger stated, this property is located. Within the Witherspoon Jackson historic district, um, the historic probation commission reviewed this application at their meeting on May twenty-third. Two thousand twenty-two, um, this is considered type two um, on the overlay map, um, which is um, a property which is subject to. Um, review by HPC from anything that is visible from the public right of way. Um, the applicant also appeared before HPC on October eighteen, two thousand twenty-one for a concept review. And uh, the applicant has incorporated into the architectural plans, um, these comments which they received from HPC, which was very much appreciated. Um, HPC voted unanimously to recommend granting the requested variance release, so the applicant can proceed with the proposed improvements to their house. Uh, the changes to the exterior of the applicant's house are in the rear of the house and barely visible from the right of way. Uh, changes to the exterior house are considered compatible with other existing structures within the historic district. In the Witherspoon Jackson historic district and it's expected to create um. No adverse impact on the adjacent properties or the district itself. The improvements proposed are modest in size and the HP cell. HPC felt was appropriate for the neighborhood. The house of the houses increased to approximately twenty-six feet two inches due to the steeper pitch of the new roof. Uh, the height isn't keeping with the other houses in the historic district in the vicinity of the property. And uh, the applicant indicates it's necessary for this. Uh, pitch of the roof and the height to implement the interior changes proposed um, for the project. Um, therefore, the board. If the board approves the variance application, HPC would recommend that the color of exterior lighting. Um, in the rear door be kept to a warm spectrum, not greater than twenty-seven Kelvin and um. In accordance to section ten B three nine oh, uh, where partial demolition is required for this application. If the the zoning board approves this, then there will be a following um, resolution for that at HPC's next meeting. Thank you, and if there's any questions from your board, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Kim? I do have one uh, question, so you said at the next hearing, if we do approve this. What what is the historic commission going to do?
Oh, so because the jurisdiction of any demolition is within HPC, um, they would um, have a resolution to approve the demolition if the zoning board. Had um, approved this application which allows them to add the addition on which would require removing part of their roof.
Okay, but if. Is there any question that you would approve if we approved, is there any question that the HPC would not approve the demolition?
No, they because they support the application, so they would approve the demolition for them to move forward with it.
Okay, so so wouldn't, I mean, the the board doesn't. Basically approve the dem- approve the project, approve the demolition, subject to the zoning board approving the project. They do it after.
Yes, correct.
Okay, this seems a little backwards to me, but thank you, that's good. Thank you very much for your. Evaluation, all right. Um. Mr. Kennedy, are you presenting for the applicant?
I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, if we could have uh. Ronald Berlin, our architect, and John Jackson, which is actually John and Megan Jackson in the same room, um. Brought over as panelists, they'll be our two. I guess three technically, two Zoom people, three human people witnesses uh, here this evening.
Okay, thank you.
And as they're coming over, um, uh, before I introduce them, just want to uh, agree with Derek and Elizabeth's um. Uh, notes here, um, the applicant and their architect uh. Took a lot of time and are very appreciative of HPC's process. Um, uh, just, I'll say this as many times as I can so more people hear it, but the um, going and uh, going through a a concept review with HPC. Uh, really results in a uh. Such a smooth. Smoother application than uh, than than not, so I guess I'm appreciative of HPC of having that option. Uh, meeting with the applicant and uh, and their architect um, early on so that they can uh, get comments and. And end up with a product that that works for the neighborhood, um, uh, very appreciative of that of that process, um, and. Uh, I still see uh, John i- in the attendee. Room, um, I'll continue with the introduction, but just note that I think he still needs to be brought over, um. As Mr. Bridger said, this is a small, uh, modest, only a net of three hundred seventy-seven square feet of new floor area here. Uh, yes, there are a couple of variances, but this is your classic C one. Narrow lot, existing, small lot in a tight neighborhood where we are uh, uh. Kind of with a scalpel, I would say, from from the architect going through and only um, adding what is absolutely. Necessary and in all cases. Um, respecting the existing. Non-conforming setbacks, so at each time and you'll you'll see here where a an addition is done, when you go back or up. Along the same setback line existing home, that is technically a new variance, even though we are not going any closer. To the uh, side yard um, than the existing house is um. Similarly, with the height to setback ratio, um, the numbers are almost comical when a neighborhood is that tight. To the lot lines, um, here we are a little bit more interesting, I I think with some. Because the lot next door is, I'll describe as open space, but it is essentially a part of an approved. Project behind the home, that there is uh, essentially uh, an unused lot that is an access. Uh, for another development behind here that is kind of unique. In that while these these improvements, as HPC said, are really not viewable from the street. Um, we also have the additional kind of burden of of being uh, adjacent to not a a home, but to a place where people are walking back and forth. Um, so the the. You the implications of being close to a lot line or having or height to setback ratio. Don't quite ring as true when the lot next door is is not uh, buildable, uh, but. All of those things aside, uh, the existing locations are are. Uh, respected and and we hope you'll find or agree that with HPC, uh, that the modest uh, additions here are are. Are certainly warranted. Uh, with that, I'll ask Ron to make sure his camera is on, um, and if we could have all uh, John, Megan and Ron all. Um, sworn in uh, simultaneously, um, and we can start with our testimony.
All right, if you would all raise your right hand, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
All right, um, we'll start with uh, John and Megan, if you want to introduce yourselves, um, I know we've been through a lot of these hearings now with HPC, this is probably old hat for you, but. Uh, introduce yourself, the 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 problem, you know, that that you have with your your house here and the needs of your. Your family and uh, how you came to come about Ron Berlin to help you with them.
Uh, yeah, hi, uh, thank you everybody for having us, um, we've lived in the neighborhood for about five years now, uh, and then moved into two twenty John about three years ago. Um, fell in love with the the neighborhood and effectively want to make some kind of modest evolution to the house to help us. Um, stay for the. Long term. So that's our, that's our hope and that's where Ron comes in.
Thank you, uh, before we let you go for the evening, I I know. We did extensive um, outreach, both um, just because that's the type of folks that you are, uh, and uh, you know, as as was that back and forth between uh. Uh, the chairperson and Elizabeth, that this is a technically a partial demo before HPC, which meant that. We also did notices for the HPC meeting, um, give you a lot of opportunity to talk to your neighbors, um, and uh, reach out to them, uh, and anyone express any. Any concerns about the project?
No, no, nothing negative, uh, we did have several people actually reach out after we sent out letters with positive comments uh, and well wishes for. For the historic commission review in particular.
Thank you. Uh, so, um, unless anyone has any questions for the homeowners, I'd like to uh, uh, introduce uh, Ron Berlin to uh, give his. Benefit briefly, because I know he's testified many times before uh, before this board, uh, his his credentials as an architect.
Hang on just one second, do any of the board members have any questions of the applicant or the Eastern? Okay. Mr. Berlin, please uh, continue.
Oh. Good evening, Chair. Mr. Chairman and Board, thanks for hearing our application, what cut what do you need to know about me?
Well, I think uh. Not nothing more than we know already, I believe you was you presented before many times, so we would consider you an expert.
Appreciated and and for the uh, the length of the evening, uh, much appreciated, the uh, the truncated uh, review there, Mr. Chairman, um, if it's all right uh, with the board, uh, as we start, I'd like to. Uh, again, uh, share my screen with uh, our one exhibit this evening, which is numbered slides that we had provided. Uh, and put up on the website, uh, in advance of this um, meeting here tonight. I guess we would call this A one, Karen, is that right?
Correct.
All right, thank you. So Ron, if we. If we could orient the board to to where we are uh, here in the the R four zone, I guess that's a big old arrow pointing to it, but we wanted to briefly talk about the neighborhood and. Um, uh, what what the surrounding uses are.
Sure, it's a, it's a a dense residential neighborhood, an old neighborhood in Princeton. And uh. This property is across the street from. That the play uh, playground. Uh, on John Street and behind it is the university housing. Um, and adjacent to it is Ryan mentioned is uh, this. Pedestrian passageway, which is very wide and sunny that leads into that development.
And uh, move to the next slide here, where I guess this this shows the overlay of the historic area.
Right, that the. The Pox represents the historic neighborhood. Uh, and so. Yeah, we're in it.
So uh, moving to the next slide here, we've got a overview of of the existing home and the surrounding uh, um. Uses uh, um. Want to take the board through a quick neighborhood door?
Sure, these are. Uh. Old-fashioned vernacular homes. With pitch roofs and. Gables. Um, they're pretty closely spaced. And the problematic, as it were, um, facade is the one that faces this very wide space conveniently enough. Um. So.
Five here is the existing conditions.
Hmm.
All right, so on the left, we've got the front of the house. And the right, that's the view of the. I'll say that the the facade that's going to be altered uh, with the rear additions from, I guess, that uh. That walking path.
Right, that's the view from the walking path. Um, and you can see it's kind of a typical. Uh, sequential set of additions improvised over the years and modified. A kind of a. A a trail of of added bits, um, and. We're hoping that the. New design kind of uh. Sorts through all that and makes a neater appearance, but actually retains their vernacular quality as well. And you can see also that the that facade, the one that faces south into the open space. Is in some real need of. Help. So that's, help is on its way. Next. Please. Thanks, and this is a comparison of the existing and proposed, the existing. Uh, south elevation. Also shows the the floor levels and the floor to ceiling height on the first floor is. I think it's seven foot four, I can't quite remember, um, the owners really wanted where they could, they wanted to jump up. To a more standard. And commodious eight-foot ceiling height, so I've done that for them. Uh, the comparison of the two front elevations, please note that. Oh, that trickster Ryan, I know you didn't mean this, Ryan, but the the elevation that you show, the proposed is a little bit smaller. So, but.
I noticed that too.
Apollo, that's why my uh, my zooming skills with PowerPoint are currently not.
Uh, but um, you can see that the the front elevation is for intents and purposes unaffected, yes, the roof. Uh, sl- slants up. To a higher ridge, but because I've given it a little bit of um, an an eve and overhang at the front. Um, it actually ha- has. You know, it's uh, it's height above. The above the street is actually just a little bit lower. Um, and if you look at the side elevation. There also we have a gable that does rise up higher, obviously, but the. The trailing end, as it were, of the of the house. Um, actually is lower than a section of the existing house that Eve. In the in the sort of in the middle where that largest window is. Um, is it actually cuts away from the existing. Sort of weird asymmetrical gable and the bit at the back is is the um. Part of that, part of what you are seeing there is a uh, an entirely new two-story addition. Um, that's right. And I I wanted to articulate that differently from the rest of the house, partly to give it. A little bit of a. Flavor of that kind of improvised addition that you see in the neighborhood. Um, so it has hipped roof. Um, and I really wanted to make that section wider, that section now is just. Almost completely blocked off from view and from light and it's cramped and it has the wrong use altogether. And this is going to be a real headquarters, as it were, intimate, mind you, but. Uh, a a tight little cozy dining area that looks out. Over their own property and over the, you know, the the neighboring space. Um, and so. That's why I I widened it from what it is now, the footprint that it has now. But it's really a modest widening. Okay?
Right, so probably the best way to to understand the variances is that from the top-down view, so here. I guess the the site sketch, if you will, of of the existing house and. Where the where these variance locations are and then a recitation of the relief needed, so Ron maybe would. Take us through. You know, we we're, you know, we, when we do variances, we talk about the kind of the the worst-case scenario. Points here, um, but uh, um, maybe you could relate the. Addition that we just saw vertically to the.
I I I'll try to do that verbally, it's it's just so tempting to. To point. But I I can't, so um, uh, but you can see that the hatched bit uh, at the front is the existing, it's. An existing. House. Of two stories. The next bit that you see. Follows the footprint uh, to the south and to the north. Um, and and it it and adds a second floor piece, that's going to be the new master bedroom. And just. West of that is a a continuation of that space, um, and also there. On the. Um. West and north walls, those are. Continuations of the existing footprint of the house, so the only place. Where we have added new feet, well, there'll be where there will be new excavation is that little rectangle. Tucked into the corner that makes for. A proper comfortable space on both floor levels. Rather than like a cramped, mean space on both levels. And then there'll be a new landing and new steps that. Lead down to a new stone. Uh, paved terrace.
So just to to kind of summarize then, so this, what I'm pointing at here with this big arrow points, the one point two feet. That's setback of this addition here, but also the existing setback of the home, is that right?
Correct. Yeah.
And then this three point one foot setback is actually stepped in. Closer or further from the lot line than the existing home is at that one was at that, whoops. At that one point two foot uh, section, is that right?
That's correct.
And then we also have a variance in the back for the patio. Um, and that. And that location was chosen because there's a an existing fence and screening and I guess a retaining wall at that location.
That's right. Yeah, you can see double line.
And and when you say you could see it, I'll go back to the photo. You really won't be able to see that. That's that's completely hidden from from any neighboring view there.
Right. I mean, you can see it in the site plan. That's all.
Correct, but not from any adjacent properties, for example.
Correct.
And and I'm going to back up one other spot here, you know, we had a an interesting kind of discussion about height to setback ratio with the last application. I'll I'll note here that where the current worst-case scenario of not of of the existing non-conforming height to setback ratio is kind of along a larger, more spread out side gable. And while the new number at the worst-case scenario is slightly steeper, it's at a much more limited location. So going to this roof treatment, you're you're kind of condensing where the non-conforming area is into a smaller spot. Is that fair to say?
It is. Yep.
So the the again, the the variances needed are the height to setback. And then there are four variances for setbacks, the one point two feet at the second story addition. That's at this point, the three point one feet at what we call the two-story addition. And we we chose these to match Derek's memo, just so there could be less confusion because second story versus two-story is a bit hard to follow, but that's at this point here is three one. And then the one point seven feet is to the proposed patio, which was chosen because it matches the existing retaining wall. And then the combined side yard setback is the same as is now, but because we are having a slightly longer front-to-back portion of it that is at that five-foot total that is a new, essentially an extended variance condition as well.
Also, I'd like to add just a brief note in in addressing Elizabeth Kim's comment from the HPC. The HPC was really helpful. It was an excellent experience, I think, for everyone, including the owners. But that bit about the warmth of the light count on it. I'm a big believer, so twenty-seven hundred degrees Kelvin. If I could get that number even lower, I would, but that's the generally accepted standard lowest and warmest light, and I'm all for it. And I'll also just remind the board that this property width is exactly half of the the zone limit. So the minimum required width is twice, fully twice the width of this subject property. That's all.
Thanks, Ron.
We have Thank you.
Happy to take any questions from the board or or any of the town's professionals on for architect.
Board members, do you have any questions of the architect owner or attorney? Okay, all right. If there are no questions, Mr. Kennedy, we will go, we will open this to the public. Would you like to say anything?
No, that I'll I'll reserve and say a briefing after the one person perhaps speaks.
Okay, all right. Claudia, has anybody, we're going to open this, the public portion of the hearing. Claudia, has anybody indicated they wanted to speak?
No, no hands.
Okay. Give it fifteen seconds or so. Okay, all right, we'll close the public portion, Mr. Kennedy, once again, before we go into executive session.
For real quick, I want to thank the board members, Derek and Elizabeth, and everyone at HPC. This really was a team effort and a whole process with with everyone in Princeton to get to this point. And I hope that you as board are as happy as as HPC and the applicant was and how this turned out. This is a your classic ultra narrow lot. They've gone out of their way, you know, I think Ron with a scalpel to only add places that, you know, match and respect the existing non-conforming setbacks. And then on top of all of that, we have the unique, I guess, lack of negative element that the side of the home that where this is done abuts to a walkway and not another home. So similar to the house on the other side, which this doesn't quite mirror, but a similar configuration, we're not net, we're not facing the type of concerns that height to setback ratio and setbacks have because there's no home that's at that location. So with that, again, I'll I'll thank the board for your for your time this evening and appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, board members, we're going to go into executive session. Does anybody have any comments on this application? Well, I I'd like to say I think it's a very nicely done addition. I think it'll be a real improvement on the home. And that's it. Any anyone else like to make a comment? If not, somebody like to make a motion? I'll move to approve with C one. Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. Claudia, can you please call the role?
Paulson?
Yes.
Floy?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ford. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, well, we'll, if there's no other discussion, we'll adjourn to the evening. Okay, have a good Fourth of July.
Good fourth.
Good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care. Thanks, everyone.